Make a motion, call the meeting to order at 6:31 on April 22nd.
Sub whose?
All in favor. Approval of the agenda that may be amended. I'd like to move number 13 to number six.
Okay.
The driveway permit, we have Abby online, there's no need for her to. And then everything else stay the same from there.
Great.
Coming down. So approval of the minutes. We have minutes of April 8th, Select Board Special Meeting. Steve Finner and Jim Hatt, Chris Carr, I didn't see anything in there at that time to be changed.
Well, that's what we.
April 8th?
Catch up, yep.
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Yeah, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
That's the only minutes that we had to be approved.
Okay.
Michael, correct? April 8th.
Did you do the domestic dog hearing? Minutes, April 5th?
Those are.
Where are they?
Yeah, they're very before.
Okay, so they're right before. I'm making motions to approve the minutes of April 5th. Public hearing for vicious dog slash the Mexican pet complaint. I read that already, so not.
Second.
All in favor? The next one up is Select Board Member Concerns and Feedbacks. I don't have anything that's not on the list right now.
No, just, we did turn the light back on at the top.
That was intentional.
It was intentional. And the biggest, it's the biggest concern I've gotten from all the residents.
Yep.
What the plan is, I've already reached out to La Faso, is they're going to come up and they're going to change the light to be green longer coming up.
Good.
West Hill Road. Just the amount of traffic we're getting on the weekends and stuff.
Yep.
And in the mornings. We've been advised to keep it.
Okay, that's great.
Green light.
That's my concern.
We're on it, we're just waiting for them to come up and change the timing.
Okay.
So it'll be less on the Killington Road.
Right.
More on.
More on the other way.
And the timing for the in-between will be less on.
Yeah, that's great. That'll work great.
I got a bunch of phone calls on that.
Yeah. Home's open.
Okay, so open public comment, I'm going to go to the public that's in-house first here in person. Does anybody have anything that's not on the agenda? Hey Steve, that would like to speak up? Not hearing anything from this crowd. Anybody on Zoom? And I just see really Patrick Cushing, Jerry Russell, and Dave McComb. You're here for everything that's on this thing here, so no open public comment. We're moving the driveway permit, Abby, up to number six. So number 13, 480 Coffee House Road, if you want to take it from there, Abby?
Hi, thank you. Yes, we have a driveway permit from Alan Withall for Coffee House Road. Ricky has gone out and looked at the site, he didn't have any issues. And the fire chief booked as well and found no issues with having the driveway at that location.
Good. Is there any culverts or anything that has to be put in, or no, this is a flat hand over there, right, Abby?
Yeah, pretty straightforward.
Okay.
There's actually some sort of a former driveway already there.
This is Doug Johnstone.
Yeah.
Was a right-of-way at one time.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion for the driveway permit to be approved.
Yep, second.
For Alan Withall. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Congrats, since you're acting chair.
Thank you, Abby.
Thank you.
Thanks, Abby.
Number six is personal property tax cancellation. Huntington Technology Finance. Huntington Technology Finance hasn't had any business with the ski area in Killington since the end of 2022 and has now been permanently inactivated. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Killington deal hereby authorize the cancellation of his debt. 2022 is $111.57. 2023 was $106.19, which I guess they didn't have business at that time anyway. And the total was $217.76. It's been signed by Pat Lindemeyer and Walter Findisen of the Lister's. They're asking for this, and we leave this up to the Lister's, they go through it. So can I just get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept this.
Huntington Technology Finance, number 13802, to be canceled out of the debt.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to, I'm going to pass around the table as well.
Yeah. Original.
Well, yeah, the one for Hunting Technology, but the board also approved Forgiveness of Taco X a few months ago. That one needs to be signed too. It's already been approved.
So this is Huntington, right now, this is Huntington that I'm signing here. There you go. I think, I think we just placed the Taco X one. So that was already approved. Whoever is on, Lisa, you're not muted. There you go, Chris, that's Taco X.
Hi, do you want me?
No, not yet. No, you're, you're not muted, and we're talking. Thank you. Okay, then changes, charges to the personal property, non-filers, and reducing the taxable amount. So this is two steps here, Pat Lindemeyer's here. She went over this with me one day in the office. This is something that we had heard about during the last election or whatever, where the majority of the people, 90%, don't file their, their, or 70%, whatever.
Sixty.
60% don't file their personal property tax, so you just give a dollar amount. And then when you start from there, you would like to.
They don't send paperwork back, they don't send back anything with numbers on it.
Right.
And so that tells me they've got gold-plated faucets in their businesses. So.
So you have a dollar amount on there now?
I have a dollar amount on everybody, and it's equitable across the board, per, within category. Not, bar and restaurants aren't going to be the same as a commercial outfit from Minneapolis.
Right. So this is asking for, as much as this is a town tax only, the Lister's are requesting permission from the Select Board to assess a 50% premium on non-filing accounts. And what we had heard during the last couple of months is, is that the number that they're getting is lower than what they would pay if they had to fi, if they did file it.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess this is a way of finding out when we hit that threshold.
Some people may respond, others will still not, because it's not still going to become close.
So I'm going to make a, I'd like to get a motion.
Just one quick comment. Pat, when was the last time the formula to determining the tax was looked at?
There's no real formula, it's just that for the last, I, this was a vote.
10% unappreciated.
This was a vote-in tax by the town, and I have no idea what the year was, because I wasn't doing it then. But it's been here a long time. And so probably about, well, before the last reappraisal, what, 12 years ago? I took it over and started augmenting it, because there were a lot of businesses that weren't getting the paperwork. Not just locals, but again, some of these outfits in Minneapolis, or Baltimore, or California, or whatever. And so I got quite a list, we're up to about 170 businesses, if you count all of them. And the big companies are pretty good about sending their paperwork back. It's pretty much the local people who haven't. And it amounts to a pretty good chunk of change for the town. So this year, on the paperwork that went out, I wrote a little note to the locals saying, you know, this is a town tax, the state does not get any of this money. Help, basically, I didn't use those words, but hopefully that'll help a little. But as of right now, mm, I've got maybe a quarter back, and they were due April 20th. Now, I get that some people's IRS, their tax work isn't done yet, or isn't ready yet, so I get that. As long as we get the paperwork back by the time that we need to start sending out tax bills and giving me time to input all this stuff. And I hold off on inputting everybody until pretty, pretty close to the 11th hour to give everybody a chance.
I've gotten five phone calls in the last week from people that haven't been able to yet, that they said they're getting their tax work back from us. So just file it with.
So it's, it's still, you know, we're still good for another, what, two months? I need to start doing something after the middle of June.
But this is more, this part is more of that if you billed somebody $800 last year, okay? Now you're asking, and they're not filing the paperwork, and I've heard from some people saying, well.
Right.
It's not worth it for me doing, because this tax, that's less than what I would have to pay if I filed.
Exactly.
So now you're saying the $800, we go to $1,200.
Yep.
And then if that's worth it for them to file, then they will file it.
Right.
If it's still lower, then.
It's a little more money for the town.
If you went to $1,200.
Yeah, it's still a little more money for the town.
And then the following year, it would go to $1,800, and sooner or later, you're going to find out, or they're going to say it's worth it.
So 50% probably would help us reach that goal.
Right.
My 10% is not coming even close.
Okay, so can I get a motion to accept the 50%?
You were asking, there is no.
Formula has not changed.
There's no, well, nothing has changed, it's just I try to be equitable across the board with, within categories.
Yep. Nope, just wanted to know.
And it's based off of the municipal tax rate, it's not based off of the education tax, it's just the municipal side. And it is for people that have leased equipment in town and everything.
That too.
Right.
And it has to be garaged in Killington.
On April 1st. The rule says April 1st.
I'm not sure about that, whether it has to be garage, or whether it's just sitting on property for.
That's what you mean.
Period of time.
Be in Killington.
There is somebody who does not have a business actually in town, if you look in Montpelier on the state site.
Yep.
But has a lot of equipment in town. And then you have some locals who have heavy equipment, who have their business in town, but keep the, keep these stuff outside of town, so if they, they don't have anything, we can tax.
Okay, just kind of curious.
I read something that it's the same thing as property tax, that it's equipment that's in town on April, as of April 1st of the year.
Okay.
And I guess if somebody wanted to move all their equipment out in March.
Move it out and they're moving it out.
They don't want to waste their time doing that, whatever. But we have a motion to approve the 50% premium on non-filing accounts.
Chris? And every year moving forward.
And every year moving forward, until they start filling out the form.
Yep, sounds good to me.
All right, all in favor?
At the very least, we get a little bit more money for the town, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yay, thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
There you go, Chris. So then there's part two of this here. And part two is, is that last year you came to the Select Board for $5,000 to be not collected? Or no, $10,000.
Right.
So if somebody had, if somebody had $8,000, $9,000 worth of personal property.
I think if we could have five, either.
Five, so it's for personal property tax over $5,000.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that, Chris. Can I get a motion to allow the Lister's?
What doesn't cost $5,000 bucks?
You know?
Comes up with, and so.
Yeah, so let the Lister's move forward with $5,000 to be the starting point to set out bills or whatever.
Yep.
All in favor?
Thanks.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
You don't need a signature on that, right, Pat?
It's all signed.
The 5% to the 10 to 5%?
Yeah, they were on the same.
Okay.
It's on the same.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I signed it.
Hang in there one second, do we have Steve?
I think Steve is in.
Steve Finner, yes, there's Steve. So Steve is in, so can we run through the liquor control? Which one would you like to start with first?
I want to start at the bottom, these are all recalls. The bottom is Yama Ramen for a first-class and outside consumption.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the Town Clerk's Office to move forward with a first-class and an outside consumption for Yama Rama. Steve?
Check in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, Pat.
Okay, next, Pinnacle Spa and Lounge, it's a first-class restaurant bar.
I'll make a motion for the Town Clerk's Office to move forward, Pinnacle Spa and Lounge Limited, for a first-class lesson.
Check in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have Mountain Merchant, a second-class tobacco and tobacco substitute.
I'd like to make a motion for the Town Clerk's Office to move forward, Mountain Merchant for a second, a tobacco license and a tobacco substitute endorsement.
Check in.
All in favor, Steve? Aye.
Aye.
Fire on the Mountain Glass Gallery and Smoke Shop, it's a tobacco substitute endorsement.
I'd like to make a motion for the Town Clerk's Office to move forward with Fire on the Mountain Glass Gallery and Smoke Shop for tobacco substitute endorsement. Can I get a second?
Check in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Steve. Is that good for you there?
Yes, thank you.
Zoning bylaw amendment hearing, do we need to open this up, Michael?
Yes, like I'm happy that we're going to make a motion go into the hearing.
I'd like to make a motion at 6:47, April 22nd, Monday, to move into the zoning bylaw amendment hearing. And get a second on that, Chris?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to take it from here first, Lisa?
Sure. I assume you guys want to give, you want me to kind of give a high-level overview of what we're, what we're doing?
Correct.
Okay, so just, before I get into something more specific, the principal purpose behind these amendments is, one, to reflect the changes that the legislature last year enacted, the Home Act, or S-100, which is designed to encourage the production of housing, and that legislation precedes local zoning. So state regs recommend that towns bring their zoning bylaw in conformance with S-100, so our zoning administrator doesn't have to go look at the zoning bylaw and then look at S-100 to see what rules. So we made those changes, and we modified the manner in which building heights are measured. And this is all proposed, obviously, proposed to modify building height limitations applicable to PUDs in the Ski Village 2 district, proposing to modify setbacks applicable to PUDs in the Ski Village District and Ski Village 2 District, and authorize the town to assess an application fee to pay or reimburse the town for the cost of hiring outside consultants such as engineers to assist in review of any applications. And then finally, we made revisions throughout the zoning bylaw to clarify and correct definitions, paragraph numberings, typos, and other inconsistencies throughout the act. We also may, are proposing to make two changes to the zoning map. One was that really just a clarification that we have a public open space definition, public open space area, and then we have a public open space slash Killington area, that's the open space. It's actually the lease to the resort. And our zoning bylaw had identified some different uses that were allowed. And yet the zoning map did not differentiate, so that was one change. And then the second change was a minor, minor adjustment between Ski Village and Ski Village 2, so that all of the village would fall against Ski Village 2. So that's kind of the super high level you want. Now, I could kind of go section by section, but pretty quick through the bylaw.
So Lisa, before you move on there, the other thing too is, it's finally on this zoning map, it actually has some street names, so we can locate where we're at instead of just looking at colors?
Yeah, we added street names and we actually changed some colors, because we have been told that for people who struggle with colorblindness, they have a hard time differentiating the colors. So we kind of made some changes to the map.
Okay.
I don't think that's, is that Michael that's doing that?
Yeah, I'm messing around, I don't think that's the most recent version.
I don't think that's the correct version. It should be on the homepage.
There you go. August 28th.
No, no, the top plan, go up, it should be.
Up higher, did I see something else?
It should be for here.
Yeah.
The 321 draft, here. There you go. Okay. I'm going to run through it quite quickly, so I don't know if you want, anyone wanting to follow through, but.
And there's a copy, if anybody here would like to take a look at it on the table here with the map?
Right. So obviously, the table, part of the pages. Moving into the definitions section, accessory dwelling, go back. That's a change that we made, accessory dwelling, not a review, but the change that we made for compliance with S-100. Again, the state law is, you know, encouraging and has relaxed the regulations for accessory dwelling units. And we made those changes, affordable housing.
So Lisa, on the ADU, the way it was written before was that it was a one-bedroom, but the state, it could be as many bedrooms, as long as there's septic or sewer, and it meets that 30%.
Of the building.
Of the, of the primary. Or if the primary is smaller than 900, of the 30% of 900, then it could be a maximum of 900.
Square feet, correct. Right, so if you had a 5,000 square foot house, and you want to put in an ADU, you could put in a 1,500 square foot ADU. And as Jim said, we, the town restricted, previously restricted them to studios or one bedrooms, and now there's no restriction on how many you could have. Again, but again, subject to the availability of water and sewer. Affordable housing, we just needed to add a definition for affordable housing, because again, the S-100 requires the town to, for, somebody wants to construct affordable housing, they are entitled to get a density bonus, so we needed to define what, what affordable housing is, and this is kind of the standard definition. Same thing with affordable housing development, we just put it in as the definition, so that in the zoning, it's clear. Areas served by municipal water and sewer infrastructure, again, this is consistent with S-100. S-100 has, and states that in areas that are served by municipal water and sewer, town must allow a minimum of five dwellings per acre. So that's a pretty significant change. I mean, theoretically, if we had water and sewer in, let's say, even our one zone, we would have to allow five dwelling units per acre. Obviously, right now, we don't have any municipal water, but as everyone knows, we're in the process of constructing the municipal water system. And anywhere that is serviced by municipal water, we'll be able to put that density on their side.
And just to save the zoning administrator many phone calls later on, that five per acre, really, the point you, you have to take into account that you need to put in a road system and everything else, and that's going to start taking away from.
Right, you may not get, you probably wouldn't get five homes, but you could.
Could be tough for parking.
Yeah, that's what.
Everything.
Well, in S-100, if you're building, this is what's weird, if you're building an S-100 for a single-family home, you only need one parking space, even if it's a three-bedroom.
Again, if it's served by municipal water.
Water and sewer, right. Okay? But if you're then going to move that house into a short-term rental program, then there's other parking requirements in short-term rental.
Is there a limit to the amount of square footage that the building's allowed to take up as a percentage of the parcel?
So we're going to have to take a look at that, Lisa, because you have like in certain, S-100 kind of kicks that out, because we might say in an R1, or commercial here, it's like 10% or 25%. But they're telling you that they can do five on an acre, as long as they can fit the road in.
I don't think it increase, I think that the, you still have to, you still have to meet setbacks, you still have to meet coverage, but you could have one building with, you know.
So the percentage of coverage per square.
Right.
Foot, doesn't it?
It's really hard to put five single-family one-bedrooms or two-bedrooms on a one-acre lot here. This is more to do like an apartment building, maybe, on the Killington Road, of five, five, two or three bedrooms in one. And going up and with the height changes later on helps that out too, because of, you know, the way we're going to measure heights.
At least right now, we don't, I don't see us putting water, municipal water in an R1 zone, but we never know.
No, you don't know.
Okay, Lisa.
We'll kind of move along. I don't have control of that.
Keep moving.
Gotcha. Oh, you're watching, following in my lead here.
Building height.
Building height.
The next significant change is the definition of building height. This is just, I think this is important, we, the current definition is that it's measured to the, I guess, the lowest point of the, of the, the floor of the highest level that's used as living quarters. So it's kind of an odd definition for building height. It's just really if you have, say, a three-story building, and it's all used for a living, the floor of the third story is how we currently measure building height. It's a very unusual definition, way to do it. So now we're just doing it as, from the grade plane, the average height of the highest roof surface. So it's a much cleaner and easier definition for, I think, any zoning administrator, and it's pretty much what's used everywhere. So that's.
So you're just going around all four sides of the buildings?
As we discuss the height, as we get the height section.
Yep.
Anyway, keep going, this is a real, just a cleanup. Really, the next significant change is either just clean up and define a plane.
Stop there. The health, the healthcare facility?
We go back to the independently occupied unit. Yeah, there it was. So we made some changes to that. There's, was some back and forth discussion kind of with Ray Gull, because they're proposing to build units that have blockout units, and the question is, is the blockout unit considered a separate, independently occupied unit, or is, or is it part of the primary unit? And we came up with some language that said for zoning purposes, blockout units that can be independently occupied and legally conveyed as a separate unit must be counted as a separate unit. But if a blockout unit can be conveyed, it's not counted as a separate unit. So hopefully that's, that makes sense.
It's just like the Killington Center when they were first put up. They have lockouts, but it was all one person owned it. Name share or whatever. But then some of them got, started changing into full-time, year-round.
We had the same thing with the Woods.
And the Woods, and the Grand Hotel, a lockout if it's into the one unit or whatever, but if someone could come in and buy the one bedroom, and then someone could buy the studio, then they're two separate units, and we're not.
I would agree.
Playing that game.
Yep. Makes sense. And does that count any cooking facilities, or that's not taking any?
No, because the studio may not have cooking services.
Okay.
It might just be a studio that's one person buying it.
Nope.
Going out to eat somewhere every night.
I think the conveyance is a good idea.
Yeah. Do you want to get into lot area?
No, I think, that's just a cleanup, and I don't think there's anything else here, that this is all just cleanup. You know, Select Board, just so you go back, I mean, the zoning had a Board of Selectmen, so I mean, those are just the cleanups that we've done. Going on to, I think, page 22 is really the next significant change, which is our setbacks. And this is setbacks in Ski Village. And this is setbacks in Ski Village 2. First of all, I think everyone, or at least Flagboard remembers that we have changed the setbacks in the commercial district. We had changed the front setbacks to 15 feet, and side setbacks to 15 feet, and then we maintain the rear setbacks to 25 feet. So for the Ski Village 2, not in the PUD, we decided that it made sense to make the same setbacks as we currently have in the commercial district. Probably should have done that when we changed the commercial business and commercial business district, but we didn't. So we made that, and then in the PUD, it became apparent to us that when you look at Ski Village 2 in the PUD, it's pretty hard to, there's no, within a PUD, there's no setbacks required within the PUD. That's kind of the point behind the PUD. But along the edges of the PUD, setbacks are required, and we realized it's pretty hard to determine what's the front, side, and rear setbacks for the PUD, for example, the village, is East Mountain Road the front, is Killington Road the front? So we realized it kind of didn't make any sense, so a better way to define it was to say, let's require a setback from a public right of way, and let's make that 15 feet, so consistent with the front and side setbacks of 15 feet. And then setbacks from property lines, where the PUD abuts a property line, we're gonna have a 25-foot setback, with the exception that it's, there's no setback where it abuts the resort property or lands leased to the ski resort. It just didn't make sense, because we know that a lot of Great Gulf property and the ski resort property is kind of intermingled, and it would be kind of silly to mandate a setback between the two. So that's what we did here.
So when you come down, when you come down the Killington Road, and you got like some of the buildings that are up against the golf course?
Yeah.
That are not in the PUD, it's 25 feet from that there.
I think that's a, very well-written.
25 foot setback.
That's very well-written, Lisa.
Well, I, yeah, we really have to thank Jeremy Park, because he did much of the drafting, so.
He's not on the call, so thanks, Lisa.
I'll take the credit.
Yeah.
Again, the language here is just, again, this is water and sewer, the five units per acre, because we, Ski Village 2 will be served by municipal water and sewer, and therefore the density that's set forth in S-100 is actually applicable to Ski Village 2, probably Ski Village 1. And then I think the next really significant change, other than, you know, typos and things, is section 426, that's the regulation.
What page is that, Lisa?
Page 50, so.
Keep going fast, so we don't get dizzy.
I'm going.
There we go.
Got it.
We're 26, keep going, keep going.
Oh, keep going, by the other way, so it's past 50.
There you go.
I guess 51, okay. So first of all, as we discussed in the definitions section, we changed the way height is measured, and as a result, our maximum building height, which we had had in all zoning districts of 28 feet, was, didn't apply, because by changing the definition, we're now, we're not measuring the floor, we're measuring the mid-level of the highest roof. And so that equates to roughly 40 feet. So we've changed the maximum building height for all structures in all districts to a maximum of 40 feet. So, I hope everyone understands, we're not increasing the height, we're really changing the way in which we define.
If we went to the floor, it's still around that 28 feet or whatever.
Correct, correct, exactly. And then, moving into the approved PUD. We had, before, we had, in an approved PUD, in basically all our zoning districts, we had allowed a height of 47 feet. And again, we're changing that to 68 feet, not because we're increasing the height, but because we're increasing, we're changing the definition. So within a PUD, within our commercial district, within the business district, the Ski Village district, the height is 68 feet. And then moving down to the requirements for Ski Village 2, we made a very small change, it went from 47 feet to 70 feet. Again, 68 feet is kind of the equivalent, so 70 feet is just a little bit above that, but really, pretty much the same. And that's for the majority of buildings in the Ski Village. But the planning commission, after kind of a lot of discussion, and I think some of the planning commission members are here, they wanna kind of talk about how they reached their, kind of came to this decision, but that we would allow within kind of each phase of the village, but we didn't call it a phase, but we're gonna allow one building that's taller, and that building would have a maximum building height of 90 feet, and that's, again, measuring from the mid of the peak. But in this case, it would have an absolute of 100 feet, which means that the top of the peak, the tippy top, can't exceed 100 feet. And it's just important to point out that currently, under our current height regulations, we have a limitation of, let's just say, 68 feet, but then we exclude church towers, bell towers, fires, speed walls, all sorts of design features from the height limitation, and there is no height limitation. So somebody could actually put in a building of 68 feet, and then put in a 30-foot clock tower. So this puts in a max, an absolute height limitation of 100 feet, so that means that not that no clock tower, no design element could exceed the 100 feet. And it's also, there's one building of this size permitted for every 200 dwelling units that is constructed, and the buildings must be a minimum of 200 feet apart. So those are the kind of caveats to that building. And then I just wanna, before we kind of, I just, the one other change the planning commission did was the base lodge. I mean, the thinking is that now we're gonna have a combined, you know, combined snowshoe and ram's head base lodge, and it was important that it be, if you just move it back some. Important that, you know, we wanted kind of an iconic structure, and so the thinking was that the base lodge within the Ski Village 2 would be limited to 70 feet, that the 30% of the base lodge could be constructed to an absolute height limitation, again, absolute heights. Need clock tower, design element, whatever, would be limited to 110 feet. So that's, that's really the changes.
What happened was, okay, what?
So on that 110 foot, and I know Paul Ginter is on the call, I see, I saw him on as a fire chief, and we have the interim back here, Mr. Bowman, so, and then we have Michael Sneed, I think, in the audience, sitting next to the interim fire chief? He's already getting to know him, huh? You know, that's, that's the one ski lodge that's going up, and that's where it's mostly like a, like a special-shaped rooftop or whatever. And the majority, there's no storage space or anything in the top, like 30 feet of it anyway, in that area, it's all more for design.
Yeah.
Okay, and then Paul, can you unmute yourself and let us know?
Okay, I think I have unmuted.
There you are. And then Paul, you sat through this height stuff with the, with the planning commission and the select board, and with Great Gulf when you were working through it, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody hears that you're on board with this, and, you know, the ladder truck, you wouldn't put somebody on a 110-foot roof that doesn't have any living space up there anyway, you would come in, and we have the right truck for that currently.
That is correct, and that was one of the big conversations that we had during the planning process, was to make sure that the height design feature with the new buildings did not exceed capability of our current ladder truck. And, you know, I'm very comfortable with where the design current sits, along with the zoning changes.
Okay.
You're in good shape.
And then can you, can you go through also, Paul, how you sat with Great Gulf's fire division, or they've had a professional that went through, and they follow all of the NFPA whatever rules, and how a building after a certain height is totally different than what the old rules were? So like, these buildings are gonna have to be built to a higher fire safety standard?
That's correct, they're gonna have to meet the current NFPA standards for fire-resistant and non-combustible construction. And again, the building design is such that they are not gonna exceed the capabilities of the fire apparatus there in Killington, and they will not go outside of NFPA standards.
So this building itself, like from the first one foot up, is built more fire-retardant or whatever than a regular building, I think, the older rules, because of this?
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna have to be fire-resistant or non-combustible construction, so it's gonna have to be type 1 or type 2 construction. So yes, it's gonna have more built-in fire safety features than would have existed under the old regulation.
Okay, and then, just since we know that, and we really appreciate you coming on, and, you know, we wish you the best down there in Florida, but you're in full conversations with your interim fire chief at this time, correct?
That is correct, and he's been directed, he can reach out to me at any point, anytime about this.
Okay, so we're gonna have to start getting you up too, but you should be talking to Paul to make sure you're up to date on. Just don't take what I say, or Chris says, or even Great Gulf, talk with the, talk with the previous chief that went through everything.
I will talk to the chief.
So, okay, if you wanna keep on moving on, Lisa, then, and then just stay still, Paul?
Yeah, no, I just, I just wanna go back to the last thing with height, I just wanna point out. Not that we go, no, no, you passed that, keep number E, right. So this is just, we talked about, except to the extent that the provisions above establish an absolute height limitation. Okay, so we have established an absolute height limitation in the SB 2 district, but nothing here in show, contains, shall be interpreted to limit or restrict the height of silos, church fires, cupola skylights, bell towers, fire observation towers, windmills, ski lifts, antennas and similar structures. I just wanna point that out, that if somebody in the commercial zone wanted to put a, any of those on their building, there is no height limitation. So what we've done in the SB 2 district, we actually have established an absolute height limitation, so I just wanted to make everyone's attention.
So somebody on the Killington Road could build a new building and put a 200-foot clock tower, but Great Gulf can't?
Correct. So just, just wanted to keep, everyone to understand that. And then, really, just, you know, as we, I think in parking, we talked about, under S-100, we have to change the parking, but only for areas served by water and sewer. Moving on to signage, I think it's page like 69. Yeah, there you go, you just went past it. The town has, I think it's under number 10, sign illumination.
Oh, there it is.
Sign illumination. After much discussion, the planning commission had decided that we would allow both internally illuminated and externally illuminated signs, provided that they don't produce any glare, distraction, confusion. So that's a change up to our attention, that we, we can allow internally illuminated signs, but there actually have, are some internally illuminated signs in town. So, and then, just one more significant change, and then.
Would that allow for like an LED type sign?
It allows for the letters to be lit from the back.
Yeah.
But would that, does that include LED, like, as we put up with the town already?
Yeah.
So you couldn't do an LED sign?
Yeah, because that's from.
Okay, I'm just asking.
So Lisa, just to make sure, like, the two signs that the town put up as trials or whatever, one here in front of the firehouse, and one down at the bottom, that would allow, those signs would be allowed in town? It's being lit from the back?
Certainly, they don't, they don't produce glare, I'm not sure if those signs produce glare, but.
I think we're gonna have to come back into, start, we said we put these two up for this, but then we don't wanna have, or I know as zoning, and I think the planning, we don't want people putting their menus flashing through to.
I agree.
It has to stay on something.
I just wondered, because it seems very vague.
Right.
And it also doesn't talk about movement or anything like that, and I just kind of curious.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to get something else, and I think, I think they're working on subdivision next, and another.
Yeah, and I do think we need to make more changes, I met, when we met with Parky the other day, raised a lot of compliments, and made me think that maybe we do need to kind of like assign it to be that.
Just like we did with the town when we first put that sign up at the bottom of the road. You remember, we had like four messages going within two minutes, and it was just too distracting.
Yeah, I agree.
And then certain colors and certain things.
A lot of studies that show that, that the signs are very distracting.
I think George was telling me there are state statutes that, that points out the time limits of how often it can rotate.
Yeah, I've had people ask me, once we put these two signs up for certain stores and stuff or whatever, can I get one, and I could put my menu on there, and we don't want to have like a rolling menu going on.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to come back on that there to come in.
You can sign it, you know, signs are ever-evolving, technology has changed a lot.
I agree, Lisa.
It's really changing, and then just moving on to the zoning permits, which came, it looks like 85, so we're kind of just, the last significant change was the it would be number, if you went up.
Zoning permits comes up on page 84, 85.
Right, so number.
Page 13.
It would be under number.
Or is it DRB? Go up a little.
It's under zoning.
They just changed it to the acronym here.
No, keep going the other way, page 85 or 86, there, keep going, yeah, keep going, keep going. Keep going.
I'm going.
There it is. So we've added, you know, that zoning permit, that zoning permit applications can include a fee to pay or reimburse the town for the cost of hiring engineer, engineers or other consultants. This just really gives the DRB the right, you know, as they're reviewing an application, and they feel like they need a traffic engineer or civil engineer or somebody that has more professional, you know, capabilities. This gives them the ability to hire somebody and charge the applicant. And we, as a town, kind of need to come up with a process for how that's gonna happen, whether we as a town go out and issue an RFP and hire a couple of firms that we have, actually a phone call that are pretty qualified at DRB to hire for, you know, for each time this comes up. And I don't think it's gonna come up, it's only really gonna be for the bigger projects. We issue an RFP and then based on that, we select a consultant. So I don't know, we'll have to kind of talk about how we want it to handle. But this does give them the ability to hire a professional, which I think is important.
And this kind of backs up the last zoning changes that we made to the fees, where it used to be for like site plan was, I want to say like three hundred dollars or whatever. And then, but then we had to go post it in the paper.
It was costing us more money.
Four hundred, five hundred dollars. So we're recouping there because also on that change, now they're paying for whoever comes in for.
Yep.
A hearing for site plan, they have to pay underneath the zoning, which was done two months ago or whatever. But this year then also, then they realized like, if we got a call on a traffic study engineer to take a look at their traffic studies, whoever comes in.
Yep.
That, you know, it's not just the zoning administrator and five DRB members that don't have any background in that kind of stuff.
Agreed.
Yep, yep. Those are really the significant changes. Obviously, there's a lot of those we picked out in numbering and such, but not going through those, so.
So I got in front of us, the public. Jennifer is here, who is the chair. I just, and Vince is here as the co-chair, right, of the planning commission? And if you could just give us a run-through of, we've just listened to Lisa, but what you guys actually went through to get to her to write this up?
Absolutely. Do you want me to go?
Yeah, if you can move off to the microphone there, we got it for the Peggy T. person. Say your name.
Sure. My name is Jennifer Yen Antoni. I'm the chair of the planning commission. And thanks, Lisa, for going through the details. As everyone who's followed along knows, it's been a long, complicated process with a lot of thoughtful discussion over the last couple of months, nearing a year. So, couple of points that I'd like to make. First of all, just so that everybody really understands that the planning commission carefully considers and debates any, any citizen kid or any potential developer, anybody who'd like, who's looking for any change in zoning or looking for some, or for looking for us, you know, looking for the town to work with them. We talk about everything that people request. There's nothing that's off the table. We're a small town. We want, we're really looking to, you know, to help businesses, to help individuals who are looking to develop. And so, you know, the detailed thoughtful work that we did with Great Gulf is exactly the kind of work we would do with anybody. So first of all, I want to say that. Second of all, one way that I really looked at this, and I think I speak for the planning commission, but I ask you two to chime in if.
Oh, sorry.
If you have something additional. This village had prior Act 250 approval. So basically, Great Gulf could have come in here and used the prior Act 250 and built this village using those plans yesterday. You know, I personally was impressed that they weren't satisfied with what was good enough X number of years ago, but that they were trying for something. They were trying to elevate the design. They were trying to make it more modern. They were trying to make it more pedestrian. All of those things spoke to me, and I appreciated the work that had, you know, that's going into this. Like I said, it would have been a lot easier and cheaper for them to do the prior Act 250 design. So that's, you know, certainly my eyes were open with that. Second of all, Lisa pointed out, you know, we put in an absolute height restriction within that SV2 district. And I guess I, I've read through, I had read through our zoning bylaws, but it hadn't become as clear to me that honestly, for certain design elements, we have no limit. Okay? So, you know, whether or not we talk about as we go forward, whether we want a height limit outside of SV2, I don't know. But, you know, what they were looking to do in these, I'm gonna call them sort of landmark pieces, so you could sort of get your bearings within the village per two hundred units, they could have just put in sort of an empty clock tower and be done with it. They were allowed to do that without us saying anything. But they were looking for more thoughtful design and, you know, the philosophy of the firm seems to be really not having just a building or a. No, an element just for the sake of having it, but they like purpose in it, like it to be useful. So, you know, having thought about that, you know, this made sense to me to allow for something beyond just a clock tower, but an actual, you know, something that would be used. Next, you know, reminder, and I've mentioned this each time that we've, that this, that we've had any sort of public hearing or when we're discussing it in our meetings. Right now, everything, any variance in, that's a term of art, so any, anything change that we've made to the height limitation is only for the SV2 unit, a district at this point. So that's, none of these apply anywhere else in town. And finally, is this the base, the whole base lodge issue? And I, you know, and everybody should understand that plans are plans. They're, nothing's definite until it's built. So this is what it looked, you know, that very cool looking sphere is what it looks like. Right now, it could change. We all know that. But what I do, what I personally was attracted to and what I wanted to help facilitate was really the creation of an iconic base lodge that really, you know, once you've seen it, once you've been here and skied, that's Killington in your mind. And we had to push the limits on what was allowable for the heights and, you know, that did bring us to a hundred and ten absolute height. But I think it's important enough, and remember, that's only for thirty percent of the building, okay? No more, only thirty percent of the building could be that high. But I think it's, I think the payoff is worth it. I really do. And so anyway, those were the things that motivated me as a planning commission member to, you know, support bringing these changes forward to you. It's been a really great process and I, what I was most happy about, I know it does, you don't always get, you know, not everybody always agrees, but I, as a chair, really like to have a process that brings all members on board. I don't want to have one member like feel like they weren't heard, really what they wanted, you know, didn't happen. And I feel like we got to a place, there were several people who were at different comfort levels with several different issues throughout the process. But in the end, we all agreed. And I think, you know, so I'm satisfied and happy with that process.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Yep.
Vince, you want to speak on it?
I could possibly prove on Jennifer somewhere.
Wow. Would you like to say something?
No, thank you.
So I just want to pick up on one spot here is that there is a sixty-eight foot maximum, and that is in that area, up in that area. And it's really moved, it was always there as sixty-eight, really with the changes of the way that we measure, which is very hard as speaking as a zoning administrator, of trying to find the lowest point of a house to measure to the top of the floor. Because when I tell people that come in for permits, the top of the floor, they think the top of the floor of the third floor or the second floor. No, I have to keep on going, no, down here, was really hard. And you had to look into it. I didn't know it, but Lisa then came around and she went around to see how other towns do this. And this is what you came up with. And it makes so much more sense of me now going around to the four points of around the, of the building and measuring to the middle of the ceiling height, whatever, the roof height. Just makes it a lot easier as a zoning administrator to go out there. And as Lisa had said, it was sixty-eight. For their design, they asked you, and that was really the only, that was a very small asking, about seventy. And as we have Paul on here, and, you know, everything, the ladder truck, which is, and all that is great. And the same thing with the thirty percent of the roof at the other side. So everything fits in. I'd just like to say thank you to the planning commission.
Yeah, great job.
You know, on, because it took you months to do this. And I'd just like to say thank you. So with the planning commission saying anything, is there anyone in the public that is sitting in the public safety building that has a comment on what was just presented to us or a question? So, and you two are public now if you had a question, but I think you've sat through most of these meetings too or whatever.
Yes, originally.
Yeah. So, I mean, Peggy, do you have anything?
No.
Steve?
Not this time.
Not for me.
Oh, I meant Steve Dispenza. Okay. So now I'm gonna go to those on, I mean, the board. You know, Steve Fineran said no questions for him. So can we go back to see who's online? Anybody online on the Zoom call? If you have a question, now's the time to do it. Jerry?
I just have to thank you. This is a lot of work.
Well, thanks. Thanks to the planning commission, along with Lisa. Anybody else? Dave, Patrick, Jake, Noreen, Doc, Karen?
All good. Very impressed.
All right. So I'm not hearing anything there. So I'd like to get a motion to approve the zoning bylaws that are put in front of us today.
Yeah, motion to be approved as presented.
Jim, close the hearing first.
Okay, first, I'd like to close the hearing at?
Seven thirty-four.
Seven thirty-four.
Get a motion to close it.
We have a motion to close it. Chris?
Yep.
Second, Steve Fineran?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to get a motion to accept the zoning bylaws that have been presented to us tonight.
Check in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That's it. We're moving on to planning commission appointment. Interested persons, Andrew Geeter, Guy Keefe, Dave McComb. I'd like to move back to executive session because that's where we discuss putting somebody on. It's personal, moving in. Okay. Appointed nine-one-one coordinator, Craig. You're the fifth one in five months?
No.
In two years. And we had said that it would be the fire chief and you're acting as the interim fire chief. So I'd like to get a motion to accept Craig Bowman as the appointed nine-one-one coordinator.
So moving.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
In favor? Good. So I believe Paul has a email with a person that he's been working with, that we have to get a copy of the minutes to saying that Craig is now the person in charge. Okay. Paul, if you don't want to hang around, if you're already gone, thank you. I think he's already gone when, he knew when he was finished. So there. Driveway permit, we already did. Recruitment and retainage of police department, that's once again going into executive session with WIT, I believe. How do you think you can do it with outside of?
Yeah, I don't think we need to talk about any specific personnel. What we've got is a memo for the board and all this is public now because it's in the minutes. And we've been posting the, I mean, it's in the packet. We've been posting the packet online. I'm not going to share the document because you can, you can find the packet items on the calendar where you found the Zoom link. So Chief Montgomery and I put this together after quite a few reviews and revisions. And we're not looking for any kind of policy, not even a motion, but just a consensus from the board so that we're all kind of on the same page. There is a problem with recruiting retainage police in the country, so Killington's not immune to this problem. We would like to strategize recruitment, retainage by, by a suite of incentives. These can be put in a future employee's offer letter. It includes a sign-on bonus, a retention bonus, qualification bonus. So, you know, fifty cents more if you qualify as a paramedic while you're employed here. Physical fitness bonus, the Cooper Standard physical fitness, it's just a, it's like when you're in high school and you do the presidential fitness tests, you know, there's different ranks on what you get. So anybody that scored fifty percent above would get a bonus. And then retirement benefits, I would advise the board to wait till the next budget season to look into this option. And then, last but not least, is to actually look into finding a recruiter. The plan to pay for this, and this got brought up before, it's in the budget technically, we could probably fit it in the budget. And the way that we would do that is just leave one patrol position open each fiscal year until we could, or until if we do find the need to put this into a FY26 budget.
I agree with all of it. The qualification bonus, I mean, we started that with before we had a paid fire department.
Right.
So we do have a paid fire department. I think we're going to six, Craig?
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, if we're gonna start saying that we're bringing on a police officer and there's a fifteen hundred dollar sign up, there's already a ten thousand dollar sign up for a police officer. So I was always underneath the impression that we would do as a ten thousand, but then just because they have an EMT, we're gonna give them a fifteen, eleven thousand, five hundred? No, it says paramedic, comma, EMT, comma, wilderness qualification.
Right, it's up to, so yeah, the way I was looking at it, paramedic would be fifteen. There's no currently, there's no paramedic in town except for an officer I have. But a paramedic is kind of the highest, highest thing. But it'd be up to fifteen hundred, that wouldn't be further.
Right. Or fifty cents an hourly. And I just would rather, which is it? What are we doing?
That'd be a one, so the fifteen hundred would be a one time. And after that, if they maintain it throughout the year, you know, it's a benefit to the town. Police officers are usually on the road. They're kind of the first time medical calls.
I'm just, I'm just asking the way it's written. It says fifteen dollar sign-on bonus or fifty cents an hour?
The intent of the fifty cents an hour is if you're already employed here and gained one of these qualifications, then you could earn a fifty cent raise.
Okay. Can we just write that out a little better? Because if someone reads it?
Fifty cents would equate to.
Yeah, right. I mean, or fifty cents per, I mean, I think over the time, if you're gonna give somebody fifty cents an hourly wage, you know, three thousand hours is what? Twenty, two hundred and forty hours in a work year or whatever? So after a year and a quarter, or less than a year and a quarter, you're already at the fifteen hundred dollars and that's continuing on. So I would just think that it's, you know, up to fifteen hundred dollars. But, you know, the paramedic you're saying is fifteen hundred, what would be the EMT and what would be the wilderness qualification if it's up to fifteen hundred? Just break that out. Up to is.
I think those respects will have to be developed. When we bring on a recruiter.
Right.
Those have to be spelled out ahead of time.
Right. But I'm just also saying, you know, we do have a fire department here now, and if they're bringing in people that are firefighters and they're going to be EMT, then we have to be fair with the whole organization. So let's just make sure we flush that one out.
Our auditors would appreciate if we went, if we actually enacted this, if WIT and I drafted an offer letter for someone to get approval from the board since there is so much discretion here.
Right.
So that's the way it would look like. I would.
Okay. But then the one thing that you had said, I totally agree. Because I'm just sticking to being fair amongst everybody in town. And everybody in town right now has a group A or a group B. And the employee contribution, you know, who cares what, you know, the employee puts in? That's not a cost of the town. But when you go into the employer contributions, in group B, which is the maximum right now, the town's putting in six point two five percent. In group C, we have to put in eight percent. Okay? And we may get a bunch of people saying, group C is available to all town employees. So group D is the only one that's not available, other than just the police officers, correct? D is the only one that's not available, other than just the police officers, correct?
I'm not, I'm not sure if it's available. What I'm seeing throughout the state is most PDs are C or D. I'm not sure about if it's available, if D's available. I know C is available.
So I mean, that, that there too. But like, if you go to the state of Vermont State Police, they're paying twenty percent of their health insurance. And in the town of Killington, you're paying three percent of your, so there's seventeen percent better there. And, you know, all of a sudden we start giving, if we go to D, that's ten point six percent. And then if we start getting other employees like, well, I'll put in twelve percent of mine and I want you to put in ten. That's a huge increase to the town. So, but you're saying that you would like to push that off for further discussion for the next budget to go around? And then we can talk about other employees or whatever on that time also. So can I get a motion to accept the?
I have a question.
Hold on. Can, 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 can you wait a second, Patrick? I see your hand up. Can I get a motion first to accept the retention program for the police department? I like getting the motion and then we go into discussion. You vote afterwards.
Okay.
We, we're supposed to get the motion first so we can discuss it. Okay? So can I get a motion to accept?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept it.
A second, Steve?
Second.
Okay. All right. Now we're open for discussion because we're not going to say the other words yet. So Patrick, did the board members first have any questions before Patrick speaks?
Well, we weren't, we're not determined what retirement benefit we would go through.
Right. Because that's for-
Well, that's part of this memorandum.
Right.
So we would remove that?
Yeah.
At this current time?
Yep. Well, if there's an amendment to the motion, then yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so I'd, uh-
Well, and then we're going to get a better definition of the qualification bonuses of, on, on that item there too? But you said that would be in the offering or whatever?
It will be. So, yeah. And, and I, again, like, since all the, since this, we believe this does fall within the budget, you know, consensus might be enough, but we could, we could work through a motion with, with quite a few amendments.
So Chris, can I get a motion for you to withdraw your last motion? And then Steve, can you second that? Just so you remove that. And then Steve, you second him removing that. Can I get a motion to accept the retention program minus the retirement benefits item? Chris?
And we need clarification of the qualification bonus as well that you asked for.
He said that, he, he said that will come in, in the offering. So I'm just asking for the, the-
Yes.
Motion to remove the retirement benefits through this current, we're moving into. And then Steve?
I'll take the voting.
Thank you. All, now Patrick, any questions before we vote?
Sure. Thank you. Thanks for working through that, uh, the process. Is, and again, I don't have this in front of me. Is there language in there about, you know, if someone doesn't stay for two years, the bonus can be pulled back?
So basically this is saying here is this-
That's a pretty standard industry then.
It's saying here, a sign-on bonus up to ten thousand dollars. Says up to five thousand will be awarded after full-time FTD or FTO slash training. And the remainder of the other five would be after one year of employment. So can you just remember, tell us what awarded after FTO training is with?
Field training, it's, FTO is field training officer. You go on the road and once you're signed off on, as an individual patrol officer, and you're able to work by yourself. So it's after all your training.
How long is that usually?
Six months to a year.
Okay. So, so the first, up to, the, up to the first five thousand would not be given out for the first six months minimum, Patrick? And then the other remaining would be after a year of employment following a performance evaluation? Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Another industry standard for that is if someone leaves before the two-year mark, then-
Clawback.
Then you can basically pull back your awarding. And it helps with, it sounds a little brutal, but it helps with retention half the year. So someone could come in and get trained up.
Agreed.
And then leave because they're already trained up and go somewhere else.
That's why I feel this document needs a lot of cleaning up. Because I don't think it's really ready to vote on. Because I feel there should be clawback language written into this. And I do feel like the qualification bonus should be a little more clarified versus new hires and currently hired.
Right. So just remember, and Jennifer knows this, there's a lot of times that I made motion at school board, so I seconded them. And then I voted no when it was a vote. Okay?
Yeah. I just didn't think we were ready for a vote.
Is there any other questions since Patrick started on the Zoom line right now? Any other questions? Jerry, Karen, Noreen, Jake, Dave? Any questions in the audience? I'm going to call a question. I do agree with Chris on the qualification bonus. It has to be a little bit more. So all in favor, say aye. All opposed to move this to another date with some more qualifications?
So you guys, so I, so I, so I think what I'm, so I think what I'm asking for is a, a retention and retainage program with some discretion of staff to create an offer and then for the board to review that offer. I think what the board here is looking for is official policy. Is that, am I correct?
I'm just looking for like where I wrote, where I read, up to fifteen dollar sign-on bonus or fifty cents an hour. If I'm going to go to work and I know I'm going to be here for five or 10 years, I'm going to take the fifty cents an hour. So why would I take the fifteen hundred dollars? You know? I'm also getting at, because I see EMT in here and wilderness qualification. And I'm looking at a fire chief over there that he's hiring on EMT people also. So are we offering it to them? So I just want, you know?
I think we're better off getting with a recruiting firm right away. Because any recruiter is going to ask for these details hard and fast. Because they're not going to go out there with a wishy-washy offer. And that way, we know exactly what, how we're going to present an offer to somebody. And what we're talking about is our benefits package to hiring.
But we also at this-
Gray area.
And we also want to get this working to get to the recruiter, which is in here. So we've already removed the retirement benefits. Are we just having an issue with the qualification bonus? And are we having an issue, are we going with where after one year? Or is, or you want to get back to a clawback in there?
We need clawback language.
Okay.
And I have to, I, I do that with my own employment practices. So it's, I think it's kind of important to have.
So what I'm looking at here is, Michael, is that what I'm hearing from Chris and Steve, do you have any comments on what Chris is saying here at this time?
I definitely agree with Chris that there should be some holdback. We're not looking to spend our money to train people to go somewhere else.
Okay. So was, and that, and that's the issue that when you come to a board, I mean, everything doesn't go right.
No, no, no. What, yeah. I think this is a great start.
Yeah.
It's, it's better than we were two weeks ago.
So, so Patrick, coming back to you, you're just saying in the normal, it's two years that?
I mean, it'll, it'll vary from agency to agency, but it's not uncommon for two years post-academy graduation or FTO or whatever your standard is. Because a lot of places, academy, if you have to go to academy, that is six months. So say you went through academy and then failed PTO, failed FTO, like, okay, great. But, but your, your work for the town really doesn't start until you hit the street.
Right.
And so if you're there for two years post-academy or PTO, then you are no longer in that clawback window. Again, some places will be more, some places will be less. Two years is pretty standard. Some places will do three.
Okay. But what we're talking about here is the first fi, up to five thousand dollars. That's awarded after the FTO slash training. The remainder is the clawback? Is that what you're saying? Not the first up to?
No, it'd be, it'd be all of it. So say your signing would be ten thousand. This has, has a number. Ten thousand broken over however long. That ten thousand can be pulled back if you leave before two years. So even after they're given, it can be pulled back.
Okay. So, so I'm, I'm working here and I'm in for a year and a half. I receive ten thousand dollars. And then I give you my two weeks notice. How do you clawback?
They write you a check. They owe you the money.
Yeah.
I've never done this, so I'm asking.
Yeah, I know. That's how it works. And so this is why we need a recruitment firm to be going through this with us, okay? To make sure that this is, the i's are dotted, t's are crossed. And they're going to go out there and find us the right people. And-
And typically you'll prorate it. So like, the first year will be full amount, second year maybe fifty percent. And then say they left like a day or two before, you can just waive it if it's something like that.
Okay. So I think the board is going to vote no on this at this point, but have the changes. And I think the next step is what I'm hearing from Chris, who's used to doing this, is talking to a recruiter or someone to get the verbiage correct. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Do you build out the entire?
Build it out. And that way it makes it cleaner for you when you recruit somebody that, you know, this, this is what it is. And we go from there. And then you already knew the retirement benefits were going to go out. So until the next following budget year.
But we still have retirement benefits.
Right, right, yeah.
But I, gives us starting, I mean, and I would also talk about our healthcare benefits.
Right.
As, as a, because I think those are strong benefits in this town.
Right, okay. So I'm going to call the vote. All in favor of passing what's in front of us, Steve, because you asked me, would be a yes. All that wants to hold off to get this into an approved document would be voting no. Okay? So all in favor of the retention plan for the police department, please say yes. Hearing no, yeses, all opposed, please say no.
No.
No. Okay. So, I mean, we're a lot further along than we were a little while ago. So if you can just give a document that doesn't have the retirement benefits on there for now?
I think, I think we want a recruiter first as well.
And then you want a recruiter?
Because you guys want policy.
Right.
Okay.
And I think a recruiter is going to want, a recruiter is going to want strong details from us.
But, but also taking into what Chris and then Patrick, because I've never done this clawback or whatever. Okay? So with that information there, talking to the recruiter. And then I'm just saying on the qualification bonus thing that I think we should be fair amongst all of our employees in the town. And if one person's hiring on EMTs in one department, then they should be offered the same thing as what an EMT would be hired on in another department. That's all I'm saying there. So when you're talking to the recruiter, just how that verbiage would be and talk to the fire chief at the same time. Okay? So I think that's the, that's it for that there. So-
Jim, just-
Yeah, go ahead, Patrick.
Thank you. Um, the, um, one argument against the equalized EMT for everyone is that in the law enforcement world, that's kind of a above and beyond your typical duties. Whereas in the fire EMS, that is your job. So that's the only, even though it is nice to reward people for already being certified. It is something that in the law enforcement world, you don't need to be an EMT or a paramedic or anything. You just get basic first aid.
Right. But, but what I was, what I was getting at earlier was, is that when we first put out for the police department to become EMTs, a minimum of an EMT, was because we didn't have and we hadn't voted yet in for a fire department. But, you know, there will be three EMT. I believe all your firemen are EMTs. So I just think we need to figure that out.
Yeah. And I definitely agree on that. Just to, to WIT's point, the law enforcement aren't going to be the first on the scene, most likely, just because they're already out. But I do see, you have a very valid point there.
Yeah, just, just run it through while we're going. That's all. So, okay. So that discussion's over. If you can start going, I mean, it is a movement forward. You're going to be trying to go out and get a-
Recruiter.
A recruiter and seeing what they say that, you know, they see is going to happen there or whatever. So department reports, finance report. I've got the comparative report from March of two thousand and twenty-four. I went through it. I didn't see anything that was outstanding to me on the town comparative report.
I agree with you as well.
Yeah.
Anything you need to point out, Michael?
Um, revenue's doing well in some areas. Hundred and eleven thousand dollars in interest income. Fifteen thousand is only budgeted for. Rental registrations are doing well. We're not meeting the two hundred and seventy thousand that was budgeted for, but we are about thirty thou, oh, ninety.
Well, this, this year is two sixteen.
About two hundred and twenty thousand over where we were last year. And local option tax fourth quarter was up from last year about ten thousand dollars.
Good. So when you look at the first page on revenue with the rental registrations at two sixteen, nine fifty, that was the end of March. We're around two thirty-five as of yesterday.
Cool.
And we have more still coming in. So the zoning fees, we budgeted fifteen thousand. And I know we're going to do, we'll probably end up doing three to five K over that because I have a lot of stuff that's coming in now. So, and we've got a lot of nine-one-one signs there. The new administrator for nine-one-one will be going out and getting those numbers put up. So, um, police department on the revenue is up. We don't look for revenue to be up, but that's a lot of grants and stuff and everything else there. So we're not looking for fines, but the revenue total is up. Fire department's up too. Solid waste is up. It's just weird when you look at the recreation because they were pretty much closed for these months because of winter, but they'll have a strong, you know, May, June, May and June or whatever. What always throws me off here is the local option tax. So actual for FY twenty twenty-three, we don't have a number in it.
You mean for the first quarter?
Is that because we're still waiting for that one?
Uh, yeah, I think it's on it. Uh, I think Lucretia's-
We're totally still waiting for first quarter.
Okay.
It doesn't come out until, it comes out like weird and like, and it's the weird date.
It's not a quarter.
It doesn't fall a quarter. No. And I think it comes out like middle of May or something.
Yeah, okay. All right. So can I get a motion to accept comparative report, town report of twenty twenty-four, March? Motion? Second, Steve?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, we jumped to the Green Mountain National Golf Course comparative report for March of two thousand and twenty twenty-four. Once again, I, I just look at this and I see the total pro shop. You know, the actual is seven eighty-eight. Last year was seven sixty-six. We knew last year was a little rainy in the first few months or whatever. So they're actually doing pretty good for that. They have budgeted higher. Um-
Have we seen the rate structure yet for this year?
No, we have not seen the rate structure.
No, but I do think we've, Mary Ellen and I have been working with Justin on more than just, uh-
Right.
Finance, but also their inventory. So we might have that we can share with you. Actually, David is going to start coming to meetings monthly.
Okay.
So he'll be able to inform.
Yeah, let's look to see where the rate structure ends up. That's all. Locals ask.
And I go to the last sheet and I see the total expenses or, you know, within line for what they were doing for the increase. And then the net, they budgeted eighty-one thousand for twenty twenty-four. And, you know, it says that period nine, we're already at ninety-five. That will, that will come down. This is, because this is in March really. So April and May, we'll see a little coming down because there'll be more expenses going out than revenue. But these guys have been getting more revenue in then in June or whatever.
Yep.
Okay. Motion to accept the comparative report for the Green Mountain National Golf Course, March of twenty twenty-four.
Motion.
Second, Steve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, motion to accept the treasurer's report of March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Yeah.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to accept the restricted funds for, um, this quarter, the March of thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, for the town and for the golf course. These are restricted funds. Nothing we can really do on there. They're there and that's what it is. Get a motion. Chris?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. We're back to open public in the audience that's here in the public- Okay, we're back to open public in the audience that's here in the Public Safety Building. I don't see anybody talking or raising their hand. Anybody on Zoom would like to make a comment on what we did tonight? Or any other things going on that's not on the list? Like, yes, we are changing the green light on the West Hill Road to be longer than it currently is. So more cars can get through.
You definitely question.
We're learning. It's only a week, but we could not keep the lights flashing the way they were.
I think we'll get it right by the middle of July.
Yeah, like July 18th. But I believe LaFaso is coming in this week to change the times on both sides. Shorten it on the red on the Killington roadside and longer on the green on the West Hill roadside. Hearing no other open public comments. Do you have any other business, Michael?
I don't. I know this television's been broken for a long time. Government gets blamed for moving slowly. I usually don't find it's the case. You know, by the time the, the person selling it to you gives you the quotes and gets it in stock, it's really on their end. So the new television's bought. We're just waiting for it to show up. And we had a municipal energy resilience planning audit of the new town hall. They had quite a few suggestions, but one of them was install a furnace that operated off of pellets. And they said that under this MERC program, that whole system could be funded 100%. Just an option. There are multiple options, but that was the most fun of them.
It would be a pellet boiler in the pack of, in the boiler area there. It would be fed by a silo outside. And instead of us upgrading our heating system in that building, and after paying for it on fossil fuel, they will allow pellets to be done.
And so what is the offer?
We haven't gotten a quote or anything, but what, what the auditor was telling us, it was to Boise and King that was there doing it. And they said that if, that, so I think the total max, maximum award of this grant's 500,000. So they said the installation of that system would fall well below that.
I think it's worth a look at.
Just make sure that the system includes the silo. Because then they come in with like a silo. We could have a Killington sign on there, a town of or whatever up above. Meet the height regulations that they just put through. And, oh no, there is none for silos. So, but there's like four tons, eight tons, 10. I looked at this like 10 years ago. And there's different tonnage. And then they come in with the truckload, like a feed truck of pellets.
I thought you were going to go to Home Depot and buy bags.
40 pound bags.
Carry them up.
Get Peter to do it.
Yeah, yeah, we get Peter to do it.
Which is zoning administrator. Oh, he's up at the top of the ladder.
Well, we'll get a boom left or whatever to lower him in there. But you're going to have to figure out how much, it'd be a lot easier figuring out what they think the usage would be and get the right silo for that.
I think it's worth looking at.
Yeah, and then come back.
I didn't make the deal or anything. I just thought it was an interesting idea.
Yeah, there's no, there's no internet over there. This is not that, like that. There's no silo over there right now.
I didn't sign the paperwork. And then our, and then our original taxable value form has been signed by all the partnering agencies and.
And that is OTV?
OTV.
And that is for the TIF district, that they're all in agreement of what values we put up there? Are the set values and then any increases from there?
It's the locked in rate in the graph.
Okay, so any increase in valuation increment will be retained by the town. 70% of the education and 85% of the town. And what we really, I kind of thought this all along, the reappraisal that's going to be happening this, next year or whatever, that is increment, even though there's nothing going up there at this point.
And then the town, the new, the town's new service provider for diesel, on-road diesels, Irving, we're just piggybacking off a state contract with them. I think it's like 281, significantly lower than our previous provider.
And for anyone that wants to know, you did check with CV to see if they offered the state and they were not on the state.
Yeah, well, and even if we did, yeah, so, and I, well, I looked on the state's procurement website. So, so we can piggyback off of the state without going through.
We were paying what, like 321 a gallon or 316 a gallon, the last batch in March or whatever?
March 6.
March 6. And it's 281 for the same time period. And then also you're signing a document for, for some reason, we hadn't paid in previous town managers. Sign a document that releases this from the sales tax. We'd be paying sales tax on our diesel, which we should have just signed a document.
I was going to say we shouldn't be paying.
And save 30 something cents a gallon, but we've been paying it. So I'd just like to bring that up to say thank you for finding that 30 cents times, how many gallons we used from December to the end of January?
I think it was 13.
25?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
25,000 gallons. And that's just a two-month period. And we were paying 30 cents.
More than we should have.
Yeah. So just want to say thank you to you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we do have one executive session, I guess?
We do. We need to seek advice, counsel on the dog hearing and.
Okay, so make a motion to go into executive session with all the base for counsel on the vicious dog.
Sounds good.